Thank you all. I'll declare the meeting of the Finance and Governance Committee, number three of two O two five, open. Councillor attendance, councillor Madsen, councillor Johnic, Mayor Harding, councillor Doyle, councillor Antonelli, councillor Madden, myself councillor Tully, and also present, who are non-members, councillor Martin and councillor Augustine. Thank you. Are there any apologies? I don't believe so. Acknowledgement of country, Mayor Harding.
Thank you Chair. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people.
Thank you. Declarations of interest. Are there any declarations? No, thank you. Business outstanding, there's none listed. Confirmation of minutes of the meeting of the eighteenth of March two O two five. Would someone please move the minutes as a true and correct record of the meeting. Councillor Madden, seconded councillor Antonelli. Any discussion? All in favour? Against? That's carried. Officers' reports, item two, strategic contracting procedures. Are there any questions of the relevant officer? No? Would someone care to move the receipt and adoption of that report? Councillor Antonelli, seconder. Councillor Madden. Discussion. Now I'll put the motion, all in favour. Against? That's carried unanimously. Item three, procurement, civic centre ticketing software. Any discussion with the relevant officer? No? Someone care to move that item? Moved. Councillor Antonelli, seconded. Councillor Johnic. Any discussion? I'll put that motion, all in favour. Against? That's carried unanimously. Item four, procurement, Amazon Web Cloud Computing Services, on page forty-six. Is there any discussion with the relevant officer? No, thank you. Someone care to move that motion? Moved. Councillor Doyle. Moved. Moved. Seconded, councillor Antonelli. The count of co-councillors, the second. Discussion. Mayor, Mayor Harding.
Thank you Chair. In regards to this procurement, the Commonwealth Government Digital Transformation Agency's whole of government arrangement with Amazon Web Services Australia for the provision of Amazon Web Cloud Computing Services have been assessed as being able to provide a substantial value add services to council. So I look forward to seeing this arrangement ensuring that we get best value, reliability and continuity for the security of council's cloud services and moving forward.
Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, just a clarification, if I may. Just in relation to recommendation B, it just highlights obviously the large sum we will need to pay, but just is the entire term meaning six years? Or is that money that's nominated there just for the initial part of the term? If I can get confirmation of that.
Okay, do we need the relevant officer? Please, yes, come forward, thank you. Thank you, just your name and position please.
Fiona Bristow, currently the acting CIO. My substantive role is ICT Commercial Manager. That term I can confirm is for the total six years for the contract.
Any other, don't, don't, there might be something. Any other questions? No, thank you for that. All right, we have a mover and seconder, I believe, that's correct. Move and second.
Yes.
Yep. Any further discussion? I'll put that motion, all in favour. Against? That's carried. The next item, it's an unusual situation, the, it does exceed the normal, this is number five, the, the normal delegation of the CEO, but there are some outstanding, there are, as people would have seen, there's in the documentation, tenders have put forward, but there is further discussion pending. Our next meeting is next week, and I'll move that this item, number five, be referred to the next council meeting for further consideration. I've moved, seconded councillor or Mayor, Mayor Harding.
I guess I think, as I told, I did notice that we always ask for the dollar amount, the amount of the contract to be in the recommendations, which is not at the moment.
No, because, because it hasn't been recommended.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, no, it's just a fairly unusual situation. Is there any further discussion on that? I'll put that motion, all in favour. Against? That's carried. Item six, five five seven seven, Adalong Avenue, Thuguna Pavement Rehabilitation. Any questions of the relevant officer? Yeah, questions? Would the relevant officer come forward please? Do we have a relevant? Ah, yes. Hi Pedro. Next paper. Just name and position please.
Morning, Pedro Barasa, Construction Manager.
Oh Pedro, just the first question, I haven't got it in front of me, but on the three-year Forward Works Programme, my recollection was it was one and a half million dollars we allowed for this and...
Sorry?
I, I, I haven't got the three-year Forward Works Programme in front of me, but my recollection is that with this project that was spread over two years, one year for planning, one year for construction, it was, and this isn't, I just wanted some explanation, I understood it was projected to be 1.5 million for these works, but the tender is for 2.8. I'm just wondering...
Yeah, maybe a bit of, it's, it's always been sort of a split fund, construction. Yeah, so it's probably that's where we're going. So at this point, we have work starting next week, actually, for internal teams, so we will have some preliminary works, and then this is actually the civil big component, what we're discussing here today, and the plan is that those works start this side of the financial year, and then split into next financial year.
Oh, so this, this work will be spread over two years, this construction work?
Yeah, correct.
Was it just the one tender we received?
No, we received, I think from memory, it was over six different tenders.
But this is the one that's being recommended for us to consider?
That's the one that we recommend, that's the team, the panel recommended, yes.
And when is it anticipated work will start under this tender?
We anticipate to start the, in June at this point, it depends, we still have to go through the, signing the contracts, raising the orders and etcetera, but we are working with the contractor to do as much as we can in preparation for them to, to be there. So by June, we should be breaking ground in there, and we anticipate it will be at five months at this point, depending on where we found on the ground.
It'll be, it'll be spread over this financial year and next financial year commencing in June, in five months?
Yes, that's the plan at this point, five, six months, yes.
They're my only questions, unless councillor Martin might have some questions.
No, good, thanks.
Thank you, just, Mr Pazza, leading on from councillor Madden's questions, with the Capital Works Programme, I can see there's 1.5 million for this financial year and 1.74 million for next financial year, a total of 3.24. Would this work do the, the entire work? Will that be the last part of it? Obviously, we've had to do a lot of work over the years in Adalong Avenue with the culverts and so on, but will this be the last of it? Once that's done, the work is finished on Adalong Avenue?
That's the plan at this point, yeah, at least in that component of the road, yes. So we started with the bridge, as you mentioned, before the culverts, and then now we're moving with preliminary works, and then we go with the actual road component, so yes.
Okay, and that'll be done, you said within, from construction to start to finish is five months?
Yeah, five months. So we'll like, again, depending on weather and what we find in there, but we're probably looking at just before the Christmas, wrapping it up before the December, um, um...
Thank you.
Twenty twenty-five, yes.
Thank you, thank you Chair.
Okay, are there any further questions? Councillor Martin. All right, no further questions, thank you. Could someone please move that? Move the mayor, seconded councillor Madden. Any discussion? I'll put, oh yeah, sorry, Mayor.
If I can, this has been a, a project that is much needed in Thuguna. It's a project that has been a bit complicated because we had to do significant drainage and culvert works over many years, and we're now at that last part where we can actually do the road. So it's great to see. I just drove it recently again, and it is a, a real patchwork, you can't drive the speed limit down that road. So I think the residents will be very pleased to see that this work is, is progressing, and it'll be hopefully a nice Christmas present for the people of Thuguna. Thank you.
Councillor Madden.
I just wanted to mention two things. This is one of those roads that councillor Martin and I get many, many queries about, and I'm very pleased to see progress being made with regard to the construction phase, with regard to the road itself, as opposed to the culvert and the other works. But it was also one of my election commitments to, you know, progress this matter as quickly as I could. Very pleased to see it arriving in June of this year, and I'm sure this will come as good news for the residents of Adalong Avenue.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mayor, did you wish to respond?
I agree, it's something that the cap, we've sort of long time in the previous term. I, I'll have to go back, but I think the last three financial years, three or four financial years, we put money into this road to get the stormwater, the drainage and the culvert all up to, up to speed, and the design work as well. So it's, yeah, it'd be like, like councillor Madden said, it'd be, it's much talked about in Division Four, and be really great to have done. Thank you.
Thank you, I'll put the motion, all in favour. Against? That's carried. Item eight, the amendment of the lease between Ipswich City Council and Swifts Leagues Club and entry into associated documentation. Is there a need, are there queries or questions that, that we may need to move into a closed session for confidential material? No? Does anyone have questions of the relevant officer? Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry, I've jumped ahead. Item seven, procurement contractual extension grounds maintenance. Yes, I was one ahead of myself. Sorry, that's on page eighty-five. Any questions of the relevant officer?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask specifically what each of these do and...
We'll get the relevant officer, please.
The report's a little vague on...
Do we have the relevant officer?
Specifics, that's all.
So just to clarify through the Chair, you're, for each of the contractors that perform grounds maintenance, you, you want to know specifically what each of the four listed contractors are contracted to do, is that right?
Yeah, I'm also, just a bit, where, I think I may...
Just, well, we'll get the officer here, and then, then you can ask the question. Oh, okay.
I may declare a conflict if I may. Which is the lesser of the two? Declarables of?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good. In accordance with section one fifty EQ of the Local Government Act, I informed the meeting, I have a declarable conflict of interest in item seven, titled procurement contract extension grounds maintenance associated services. Nature of the declarable conflict for the interest is that, I believe, the owner of one of the companies, Savco Vegetation Services, is a neighbour some number of doors up from me, just lives in my street. So just to, just to be transparent on that.
All right. Is there any personal benefit or, or financial benefit to you in respect of the matter?
We bump into one another about once a quarter, usually at the football, and that's about it. But I'm not sure, I'm not sure whether he owns those, that part of the Savco services anymore, or whether it's a different one. So I am, I am a little bit, I'm just making it as a precaution.
Are there any other questions of councillor Antonelli? Thank you, I'll move that councillor Antonelli participate in votes in this particular item, because, because the interest is a personal interest outlined in one fifty EF of the Act, and therefore a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is made in the public interest. Is there a seconder? Seconder councillor Madden. Any discussion? I'll put that motion, all in favour. Against? That's carried. Carried unanimously, noting that councillor Antonelli didn't vote in respect of that matter. All right, your name and position please.
Tanya Howan, manager of procurement.
Councillor Antonelli.
Yeah, just specifically after the types of services they're delivering, there's, the, the names seem to indicate in some part what they may be doing, but the report seems to indicate something larger scale. So do we have, or are they providing slightly different services?
Yeah, so it's a panel to cater for all of our grounds maintenance, so mowing, slashing, etcetera. And there's a panel to be able to cater for the whole needs of, of all of council, because it's so big.
Oh, okay.
Yep, so they'll each have a defined scope to, but I don't, I can't articulate each of those scopes to you right now.
Well, that sort of does satisfy my question, but thank you.
No worries. Anything else?
Yeah, any other questions? Mayor?
On the other one, in other procurements, we get a briefing, a confidential briefing note with recommendation to award. Was there a sim, we didn't get that one for, for this particular, this, is because there's a number of them, or?
No, so it's exercising the last of a six-month extension. So it's, we don't do a recommendation to award for an extension exercise.
Okay, thank you. Thank you Chair.
Councillor Madden.
I know you can't say what each of the four do, but when it says grounds maintenance and associated services, does grounds refer to sporting fields?
Yeah, it can be any number. So they're broken up into different locations, so yes, and there'll be different specification based on, you know, it has to be mowed to a certain length, as opposed to alongside of a road. So it is a different requirement.
So it's not just sporting fields?
No, that's correct.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Would someone care to move the receipt and adoption of that item? Councillor Johnic, seconded councillor Madsen. Thank you. Discussion. Now I'll put that motion, all in favour. Against? That's carried. Now we're on to item eight, the amendment of the lease between Ipswich City Council and Swifts Leagues Club and entry into associated documentation. Is there a need to move into a closed session for discussion of any confidential material? No, not at this stage. Thank, thank you. Are there any questions of the relevant officer? No, thank you. Would someone care to move the adoption of that, the report and the recommendation therein? Councillor Doyle has moved, councillor Antonelli has seconded. Discussion. Mayor?
May I ask some?
A seconder, if I may. I was waiting for the mover to see if the mover was...
I was asking questions.
Willing to speak. Yeah, go ahead with your question.
No, sorry.
Is that okay? Probably wouldn't mind asking council officers some questions in regards to this.
Okay, well, we can go back to that. Yeah, the relevant officer, could they come forward, please? So if we can, even though we have a mover and seconder, if we can just confine the current discussion to, to the questions rather than the debate on the matter, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Name and position title?
Morning Chair, Mayor, councillors, Matt Smith, General Manager Corporate Services.
Through the Chair, Mr Smith, how does this approach being proposed seek to address some of the challenges with the existing lease?
I guess that depends on which particular challenges you're referring to, Mayor. I guess one of the, the issues we have had previously is some question over accountability for maintenance. So as part of this, where we would proceed with the negotiated agreement, there has been a fairly significant discussion and in principle agreement, noting resolution today around the maintenance schedule and whether council or the Swifts would have accountability for relevant parts. So that has certainly been clarified, which has been a key issue over time.
I have some concerns with the length of the lease. It's quite a long lease being offered, given the experience of the previous lease and council's experience with how the building has been not maintained. Can I have a better understand, what is the rationale for this long lease?
Think probably a commercial discussion potentially with Swifts as well, in terms of the need for a length of time to recoup the investment that they will be putting into the facility as well, noting some of the previous history and discussions around how we've led to this point in time. So that length is really to allow them appropriate time to recoup their investment that they'll make on the property outside of council's investment as well.
Okay. It's understood that Swifts Leagues Club sold their pergicide in 2019 for 4.5 million dollars, it's been reported in the media. It appears to me that none of that money has been used for the maintenance of the responsibilities of the, that building at Bevel. How can we be sure that Swifts will maintain the building this time?
I, I guess, Mayor, I, I can't comment on the history, but, but as I've said, the maintenance schedule is pretty clear on who has accountability. So that would be a question for the lease, and we would have certain rights we can exercise under that if that maintenance schedule isn't adhered to.
Thank you, thank you Chair.
Yes, under the, under the previous lease, whose responsibility was it for the maintenance?
It was not clear, councillor Antonelli, that's probably the, the point of conjecture. So there was...
My, my understanding was that it was a relatively unique lease, and that the lease did put the onus greatly on council, did it not?
I would not suggest that that is necessarily correct. Councillor Antonelli, as I said, there's been much conjecture over this and lots of legal review over the point. It, it's not quite clear, there's multiple opinions on that one, but it's fair to say that the lease is quite lengthy and an old-style lease. So part of what we wanted to do through this is make sure we can make those accountabilities very clear in the new arrangements.
Further questions? Councillor Doyle.
Yeah, and, and just further to that, obviously, one of the challenges and concerns we had that the historical lease was a little light on in, in detail, and it wasn't always clear. So I've read the report and, and looked at the attachments. Are you satisfied that there is, you know, an appropriate level of detail now that's gone in to the document so that both parties are very clear on their obligations?
Certainly in the maintenance schedule, councillor, absolutely clear on those accountabilities. It's, I, I wouldn't suggest there's much conjecture over that. The lease is still an older-style lease, and it's extension of the lease, it's not a new lease. So some of those other commercial provisions are still similar to what they were before, but certainly from the maintenance, that is, got a, a much greater level of clarity now.
And so I guess just further, you know, I guess to the, the Mayor's commentary, and, you know, we've, and I completely understand from a commercial perspective, Swifts absolutely needed those extensions of, of term to recoup their investment. If we fast forward to thirty five years, given the investment by council, the two and a half million under our obligations, and the investment by Swifts for the redevelopment, and, and I know this will be very difficult to say definitively, but I'm just wondering where that building, what it looks like in thirty-five years after all the investment and development, given that we were left with a very, well, an asset that had reached its end of life, we certainly don't want to be in that predicament again. My expectation is with the significant investment in the development by Swifts and the maintenance by council, it should be okay?
Difficult to predict that far forward, councillor, but certainly in terms of that maintenance schedule. And, and there are still some obligations on council, as we would have within any lease around some of those base buildings. This should shore up the ongoing maintenance such that it would be in a better state than it has been through some of the challenges we've had. As with all buildings, they come to end of life, there is a point where some level of greater investment would be involved to extend that, but I would think what we have now would certainly avoid the situation we've been in in the past.
In thirty-five odd years, or whenever that may be, if Swifts decide to move on to, to something different?
Yeah, it, it's a well-structured maintenance schedule to keep that building in good working order.
Great, thank you.
Are there any further questions? Yeah, Mayor?
In the report, it talks about the fact that, that the tenure of a council property policy ordinarily requires a business plan to be submitted in order to justify a term of a five years in length. I note that a formal business plan has not been submitted by Swifts. May I ask why?
I'd probably have to take that question on notice, Mayor, and get back to you on that one, if that's okay.
Any further questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So that's been moved by councillor Doyle, seconded by councillor Antonelli. Discussion. Councillor Doyle.
Thank you Chair. Delighted to see this one come through today. Something we've been working on for about four years. As your well-of-wear Chair, it's certainly been a journey for both council and Swifts, but I'm, I'm really glad to see that we finally have an agreement on those, those terms and the investment by, by council to meet its obligations around maintenance, and excited to see the development by Swifts and their investment. There's not a week that goes by where I'm not feeling a question from a resident living around the area, what's happening, when will we see it reopen? So the community, I guess, is looking forward to having that facility up and running again. It has been contentious, it has been complex, but, you know, we had to balance the obligations of council, the expectations of our residents in the community, we had a...
of council, the expectations of our residents in the community. We had a lot of discussion around, you know, council potentially selling off parkland. So I see this as a good outcome for all, all parties involved, including Swifts. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councillor Antonelli?
Yes, thank you Mayor. There are...
No, I'm not the mayor.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Sorry councillor Tully. May I just say, I think on behalf of Swifts, this is, this is something they've been looking forward to for some time. I think that the club has suffered greatly over the last four plus years, waiting for this matter to be resolved. And I think that this will hopefully allow the club to re-establish themselves and grow. Just want to note that the fact that the sports club hasn't existed has been of great detriment to the junior members of Swifts sports clubs. And it's not just rugby league that Swifts are involved with, they're involved with many other sports as well in Ipswich that they have kindred relationships with or have specific ties to. So it is something that I'm really looking forward to, to see the final outcome here. And I look forward to next week's vote in council. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councillor Doyle, anything you wish to add as the mover? Thank you. I'll put that motion, all in favour. Against? That's carried unanimously. Item nine, the monthly financial performance report for March twenty twenty-five. Are there any questions of the relevant officer? No, thank you. Would someone please move the adoption of that report? Move councillor Johnic, seconded councillor Madsen. Discussion? I'll put that motion, all in favour. Against? That's carried unanimously. Are there any notices of motion? There's none proposed so far. Any matters arising today? Any questions or general business? No, thank you. I'll declare the meeting closed at eleven twenty-eight AM, and the next meeting is eleven thirty-eight AM.